First and foremost, the weather today certainly put a monkey wrench in plans. But it was a nice trial to see how things could go with making some flip flops in our schedule. It was convenient, I believe, that really that today was a Tuesday and we still had the flex Wednesday before us. So that provided the opportunity for us to flip the two days without affecting our students in person attendance in a negative way. I want to thank our faculty and administration for being so flexible with me today as we explored this approach. This is certainly not going to be a solution for every single snowstorm that comes our way, but it worked this time and we gave it a shot. We will continue to take a look at opportunities like this should other weather situations impact our schedule while we're in this hybrid or remote model. But again, thanks to not only our staff, but our parent community and our students for being so flexible with us today and our hope is that the roads will be okay early tomorrow morning so we can have a regular day of learning where our cohorts A and C will join us. Today you may have seen we launched our first wellness newsletter. It is an initiative that grew out of the Wellness and Sustainability Committee. This committee is one that is representative of our school community with faculty, staff, administration, trustees, parents, some student representation. The hope here was to begin to provide some real valuable resources for folks in our community to care for themselves and to think about how we can really step away from the stressors that exist in life. So this first newsletter really was a great feature of the wonderful natural resources that we have here in the Irvington School Community. So if you haven't seen it yet, please check it out. Again, great resources there. You can find it on the district website and on our social media as well. I think it's important for us to acknowledge the Irvington Village Trustees and the Department of Recreation Staff for really providing and maintaining these fabulous parks and different sites for us all to visit. So please check out that newsletter and look for future installations of this communication as the year progresses. I also wanted to touch base on athletics. On Friday, many of you may have heard that Governor Cuomo announced that he has given consent to resume or begin high-risk risk sport competitions. However, in doing so, he has really given the ultimate authority to local Departments of Health. So for us, that would be the Westchester County Department of Health. Just this Monday, the superintendents met with our county executive and representatives for the Department of Health to discuss what this reopening or restart of high-contact sports may look like. So here, we should be thinking about football, basketball, wrestling, hockey, volleyball, boys lacrosse, and other similar sports that are on the horizon and how we can really kick that off in a safe way. In working with Section 1 in the county, we've been putting together some feedback and helping inform the decision-making that Executive Latimer and the Department of Health are charged with making. Here, George has told us that he hopes to make a well-informed decision and recommendation by this Friday and the education community is certainly here ready to support their efforts in doing so. Our AD, Mr. Buonmano, has initiated our registration process for these sports. So parents whose high schoolers are interested in playing in some of these sports should look for his communication that he sent out this afternoon. In addition to this, I also want to advise the school community that any student athletes who have been diagnosed with COVID-19 will be required to receive clearance from their doctor to return to compete at the interscholastic level. The rationale behind this is due to that increased risk that exists for pulmonary and other cardiovascular issues related to the virus. So specific communications will be sent to those student athletes and their parents and our staff certainly will partner with them through this process. You know, just as tonight is an exciting meeting, we have lots of important meetings that are on the horizon. As we look to February 9th, we'll start the meeting with a public hearing related to revisions that are to be seen in the district-wide safety plan that has been posted on the district website for approximately 30 days now. And these revisions are due to changes in New York State legislation. So we will have a brief hearing and then the board will adopt the revised plan on the 9th. Additionally, on the 9th, we're going to kick off our annual budget process. This is going to certainly be quite the challenging year with so much uncertainty on all different levels and thinking about what state aid may look like, wondering if there's going to be more federal stimulus dollars that will be able to support either the state or local education organizations such as Irvington Schools. So we will start on the 9th with an overview of the budget landscape as we see it at that point in time with all the known information before us, understanding that things will continue probably to evolve all the way up until the actual adoption of the budget. And then we'll dig into the operations side of the budget. And then we will, of course, have the opportunity for public dialogue and discussion with the board regarding that component of the budget. Then on February 23rd, we'll start the meeting with some conversation around the 21-22 school calendar, which, like everything else, is a little complicated. But we certainly will navigate that and then we'll delve into the curriculum component of the budget, which will be everything that's really student-facing. So some really critical meetings before us. But I don't want to put the cart before the horse, Mr. Friedman. I think we have a great meeting tonight and I'm looking forward to the the dialogue with trustees, my colleagues, and community.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We also now have our first community comment period. So if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment, if you put your name and address in the chat function, you can be recognized. There will also be another opportunity at the end of the presentation. So if you don't have something out, no worries, there is another chance.
I added actually some follow-up questions as well to the update. If that's all right.
Go ahead.
Dr. Harrison, do you know with the analysis with high-risk sports, whether there's been any discussion about the new information that is limited at this point about these variants, some of which are considered to be faster-spreading that have been appearing in the U.S.?
No, that has not entered into the conversations. I don't want to say that the Department of Health is taking a broad-brush approach to the treatment of COVID. But honestly, Michael, that has not been a specific component of the dialogue that's been facilitated with the Department of Health.
It just, it's obviously there's limited information, but it's concerning with some predictions saying that it'll overtake the current variant. And then related to that, I just-
Michael, if I could just also mention that my understanding is that the guidance that the governor put out, that is one of the factors that goes into the decision is whether the variants are present in a community and at what level. So my understanding is that's part of the criteria that the state put out for the overall evaluation of athletics.
So hopefully that will be added to the conversation. Thank you for that. And just related to that, I don't know if you had any further updates about or follow-up to updates you gave previously that are related in terms of there had been consideration that the district might have a clinic to help facilitate vaccinations and whether that's still something that's moving forward or letting other options for getting vaccination be the route for that.
I certainly can provide an update. You know, I think all of us are aware of the concerning shortage of vaccines at this point in time. Right now, local pharmacies that we'd be able to work with do not have a supply to be able to facilitate a vaccination clinic in our schools for our faculty and staff. Should that become available, we already have plans in place with CVS to be able to facilitate such a clinic. And I want to give some thanks to Luanne Ricciardi, one of our wonderful faculty members, who's been an incredible partner in working with me and coordinating that. In addition to that, we've been working with the County Department of Health and again, County Executive Latimer in seeking to facilitate some additional targeted vaccine clinics that it would be just for school employees. Today, we provided the county with data related to the number of staff members who do not have vaccination appointments scheduled within the next two weeks and those who have had appointments canceled due to a lack of availability of vaccine. And the hope is that as other supplies of vaccines arrive, that the county would be able to prioritize the administration to school-level employees and set up some specific clinics, whether that is held here in the Irvington Schools. I did volunteer our facilities for that purpose or other local public spaces. So I certainly don't want to get hopes too high, but aside from the overall state process that the vast majority of our staff are participating in, for example, when, you know, the registration opened, I went in to register and my appointment isn't until the middle of February. And I know of some staff members that weren't able to get appointments until March, but we have some that have already obtained their first dosage. So we're kind of scattered all over the place, but if that opportunity surfaces, you can trust that I'll open our doors to whether it's the Department of Health that facilitated for us or our partners up at the CVS. Whoever can provide the vaccine and facilitate it for us will gladly welcome that.
That's great that you have that information that you're able to coordinate regarding faculty and staff. I'd heard that that's been an issue for some other school districts in terms of knowing who has signed up and who could get it. And just the final one, and I don't want to take your time because you gave a great detailed answer on that. It's just at our last meeting, we talked about getting some additional information to the board regarding surveillance testing. And I know you and your staff are working really hard. We see the daily announcements of members of the school community who are COVID-positive. And so I think, you know, you spoke earlier about, you know, informed decision-making around high-risk sports or other decisions the school has has to make and our region has to make. So I'm just curious if that follow-up information we discussed could be provided to the board. Is that something that we could get in the sometime soon?
Yeah, I believe I did forward that information on to executive team. And if there's other details that are needed, that could certainly be provided. I would say in supplement to the other plans that we had outlined, going back to a few presentations ago, we are also working with the county to see if we can acquire, and I say we, school districts in the region, if they can help us acquire the By Next Now tests free of charge from the state. Initially, there were some indications that we would be able to do that and we'd only have to worry about the administration side of it as opposed to purchasing the actual test kits. So we haven't received an update from the county yet. There's concern about availability of tests now, just as there was many months ago. So we're waiting word on that to see if we'd be able to get those tests for free, which certainly would make a process easier. I don't want to act like we wouldn't take such a process seriously, but the capacity that we have to facilitate such a process right now is a little thin. But if it is something that the board would like to pursue, we certainly, as I said at the last meeting, can take those steps to explore and coordinate with the necessary agencies.
That'd be great. And the other thing I'd quickly add is, you know, I participated in a regional school board association, the Regional School Board Association, where I was able to hear from other districts and where they've been able to implement it, they found that the spread is low to nil. And that's actually been a reassuring, you know, finding for those districts. So I'd just share that.
I'd like to ask one quick follow-up.
My question is information, we should, let's circle back on that because my understanding is that there's still very few districts who are actually engaged in the testing. So, you know, we want to understand what their experiences have been.
And I wanted to add that, you know, my understanding is that the funding for at least one of those districts came from a private donor and another district happens to have a very good shared partnership with a nonprofit health facility due to the poverty in their community. So it isn't apples and apples.
I'd like to ask one quick follow-up question also, just in regards, and this could be tabled for later, just wanted to put it in the air. In regards to the winter sports piece, just wondering what the thinking is around releasing that information and doing that kind of thinking and how that parallels with opening classrooms for greater use. I mean, kids are playing basketball, the obvious question, and again, it's a big question and I don't want to really dive down this avenue now, but like where does that thinking lead in terms of the parallel relationship between playing basketball in a gym and having more kids sitting in the classroom, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, David, I'd say that's a question that certainly is one that we could present to the Department of Health and it's been a part of the dialogue that we've been having with them on an ongoing basis. You know, the part of the implementation plans that we think about basketball, for example, there still would be, you know, limited capacity within a gymnasium. There's also been talk about the prospect of testing before events such as that if the testing was made available for such purposes. So to say that they're just going to say yes or no isn't as simple as that. There may be other steps that would be employed. You know, when we think about capacity, we're still looking at 50% capacity of spaces as far as gymnasiums go. There is also exploration as to what attendance would be like, would be allowed, would we be allowed to have any spectators? Would it only be home spectators that were limited, one or two per student athlete? Would you be able to allow home and visitors there? And then that testing component has risen. I would say there's also been some dialogues starting in the region and looking at the exploration of the social distancing requirements that are being implemented in our region with the six feet and the mask. There has been some renewed conversation contemplating whether three feet and a mask would be acceptable. I can tell you that as that conversation has surfaced, it's been relatively unanimous among the superintendents that if we were to contemplate that, we would want some confirming guidance from the Department of Health. And I would not want to be one who would take that step without such guidance and clearance from the Department of Health. So these conversations are all going on, they're folded into each other and happening in isolation of one another. I think long and short of it, the challenge is that Department of Health is entirely overwhelmed. At times when you go to report the cases, so when you think, you know, we spend nearly all day, when you think of the communication we sent out yesterday with four or five COVID cases in the school district, that took administrative staff and our nurses almost the entire day to navigate those processes. So when you think about all those cases from across the county that are flowing into them, it's overwhelming. You try to call them at times and you can't even leave a voicemail because their voicemails are full. So there's lots of challenges there. So there's a piece to it. I know there's focus on for the health and welfare of individuals and them just doing their jobs and from a school side trying to preserve healthy environments, but we do want to take that next step. But we can't do so without the guidance and partnership of those folks in the appropriate New York State agencies.
Yeah, I just want to add that I really hope that the Department of Health realizes that the policy analysis that underlies the decision about high-risk athletics, what they've termed high-risk athletics, would underlie their taking another look at the academic issues and the learning issues.
Yeah, as I said, we raised that in our conversation with them Monday in concert with the athletic discussion. And I would say in fairness to the Department of Health, frankly, when our governor made the announcement on Friday, locally, they were not aware of what was going to be announced and therefore many of them, including George Latimer, spent their weekends trying to coordinate how they were going to respond and to come up with plans to move forward. So simply stated, I would say that our local Department of Health was blindsided by the governor's announcement on Friday. And they are doing their best to work with school districts to comply with the governor's direction. Unfortunately, at this time, athletics are being put as a priority before some of those other items now.
Thank you. It's good to hear that it was discussed though, even if it wasn't the main thing on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think now we have the presentation from the community group regarding the proposed memorial for enslaved Africans. So I'm not sure who needs to be promoted for that.
Yeah, so Jay, if you could please promote Sarah Cox, Arlene Burgos, and Lisa Gen. So, good evening, neighbors. Thank you for joining us tonight. We, I want to give a little bit of framing for all of this and that there had been some outreach through members of the village as well as others from your very hard-working and focused committee and seeking the opportunity to talk to the Board of Education regarding a very interesting proposal that would seek to recognize enslaved Africans with an installation of some artwork potentially on school district property, understanding that this is a part of a process. We initially had some dialogue with the Board of Education's Buildings and Grounds Committee, who initially asked them some basic questions that preceded tonight's discussion. The committee provided an extensive slide deck of background information that we shared with the Board of Education in advance of this evening's meeting. So they have context and understanding around the great work that you're leading. So now we've side-by-side a few minutes for you to be able to provide an overview of the initiative and to engage in some Q and A with the Board of Education. And then I'm sure that when we walk away from tonight's meeting, we'll have some follow-up between the administration and yourselves and the village about possible next steps. So I defer, you know, Sarah, you're kind of our point person in communication. So Sarah, I'll defer to you and then our fine neighbors to initiate the dialogue. So Sarah?
Okay. Well, thank you very much to Dr. Harrison and thank you very much to the board members for inviting us. We will make it brief. You have had a chance to look over our proposal. I'm an educator at Phillipsburg Manor. I've been teaching the history of slavery for almost 18 years. I've been welcoming your amazing fourth-grade team. About three years ago, a colleague of mine, Kathy Sears, a researcher, and she's a writer, we decided to do the deep dive into the history of slavery right here in Irvington. And what we uncovered was amazing. We came up with 14 names of enslaved people that lived and labored right here in Irvington. We know which ones of the original tenant farmers enslaved these individuals. It's extremely rare and it's an opportunity to use this as a starting point for really learning about the history, another whole huge facet of history, other than just the Eurocentric history of Irvington, and to sort of have it serve as a springboard for ongoing education. We, as a community, are working so hard towards understanding and learning more about racial inequities and the economic and social legacies of slavery. So I think it's just a full-throated combination of all of these things that lead us to where we are today. What we are proposing is a piece of artwork by an artist named Vinnie Bagwell. Another one of us will talk about that in just a minute, who Vinnie Bagwell is. And we're proposing a bar relief on a freestanding granite block just west, just, let's see, east of Rip Van Winkle and just west of the terminus of the Stonewall. It's kind of like a no man's land in there. There's a gorgeous-
Sarah, if I may interject, what I'm going to do, as you're speaking, I'm just going to throw up a couple of the slides so the community can see that by way of example. So please continue and ignore my searching technologically here.
Okay, perfect. So we would also have a plaque that would describe in not too many words, nothing hugely lengthy. We do have a sample in here of plaque language. So I am going to show you, yeah, this slide that you see now, this is sort of the no man's land. I think it's sort of claimed by the garden club, but I think that plaque is maybe 20 years old. Anyway, it's just a perfect location for this commemoration. The next slide shows us that the little green square is just outside of the proposed entrance for the theater, so it would not be in the way of that. And the next slide, my colleague Lisa Gen is going to speak to why Vinnie Bagwell. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah, and thank you, Dr. Harrison, and to the board for having us. And so I'm here to talk about why Vinnie Bagwell. You have this slide up here, you can read more about her credentials there, but we can say she is the leading artist in this field. She's gotten a number of prestigious commissions and awards, including one very recently in October of 2020. And I'm receiving that latest award. She said this, and I thought this was particularly relevant to the school board. She said, "My work is conceived to promote critical thinking, spark the imagination, and facilitate the unlearning of hate by giving humanity to the stories of marginalized people." So we believe that Vinnie's mission and approach are wholly aligned with the Irvington School District's goals of fostering critical thinking and dialogue around issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I think you already saw that image of the bar relief sculpture, but if we can just look at that again for a moment, you can see how incredibly evocative her work is. It's very humanistic. It really, she's talked about making enslaved people the subjects of their stories instead of objects and us relating to them in this very subjective and human way. And down at the bottom, you can see that the specs are about 20 inches by 30 inches and it would cost an estimated $10,000, but none of that would be coming out of the school district's budget. We're going to fundraise separately for the cost of the sculpture. So if we can go on to the next slide, I think it deals with the plaque. And we believe that the plaque that will accompany the sculpture shouldn't embody the same values that are reflected in Vinnie's artwork. There's been a great deal of evolution in recent years around culturally responsive ways to talk about the history of the atrocity that was American slavery. And this is the evolution in the scholarship and thought that animates the language that we propose, which is in one of the addenda to this presentation. So I just want to leave you for my part of this with the words of Amanda Gorman from her brilliant inauguration day poem. "Being American is more than a pride we inherit. It's the past we step into and how we repair it." So, you know, sitting here today, we don't have the ability to change the past, but in changing how we relate to it, I think we can shape the future. And I hope that you will join us in partnership in doing that through this artwork and the plaque. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arlene.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Dr. Harrison, and the board for giving us time to talk about this project. You know, I think the next, the question is, you know, why Main Street? And I think, you know, it's important that, you know, when we are talking about, you know, where we would put a sculpture that we want in a place of honor, it makes sense that Main Street would be where we would want to do this, right? Because this is where our historical monuments are, the War Memorial, Rip Van Winkle. And I will leave you all to sort of read that slide as well. But, you know, I think more importantly, as the district engages in racial equity work, that, you know, we have to do more than just talk about it and the work that we're doing with the NYU Metropolitan Center. It means that we have to sort of, as we talk about racial equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives, that our community reflects these values. And I think that having, you know, after Kathy and Sarah's amazing research and we sort of have this wealth of information about the actual people who worked and lived in Irvington, that we have an opportunity for our children to sort of learn about the, you know, sort of the history and have a physical monument in town, in the center of town, sort of showing that, you know, this is not something, it's a history that we're not running away from. We're recognizing that this is part of not just Black history, not just history for people of color, but all of our history. And it's a good educational opportunity for children to learn about these issues, to be centered in these issues. And, you know, I also sort of thinking about Vinnie's beautiful work, to me, it's also a balance, right? There's a beauty in her artwork. There is sort of this very negative history of slavery. And that, I think, is being balanced by sort of this beautiful artwork by a Black woman. and that, I think, is being balanced by sort of this beautiful artwork by, by a Black woman. And I think it gives sort of a richer history and a richer landscape to talk to children about history that's normally been marginalized. And I think, you know, one of the things that's important about public art is that it sort of centers, it gets centered in communities and I'm borrowing from Vinnie here actually, which is, you know, that public art is a way of balancing the narrative of marginalized people. So, you know, that is an important, you know, concept. And so, you know, if you don't want to further marginalize this people by tucking it away in some corner, right? I think as we, as a community, if we want to engage in this and we really want to work towards equity, then we have to center ourselves and our community needs to reflect those values. So I think this would be an important step for Irvington and it would be an important, it would be, I think, a great partnership with the district and a continuation of the work that the district is already embarking on.
Thank you very much. So Brian, I don't know if trustees have any questions?
Well, Sarah, I guess the one, just the one question I have, just so we can understand, you know, just process-wise, what's the timing that the committee is, is looking towards?
Well, we've, we've spoken with Vinnie about that and it's about a year between giving her sort of the A-OK and fundraising. It's part of the addendum on the proposal, where it's sort of month by month of she has to do a sort of a workup of a piece and then it gets bronzed and it's probably close to a year.
Thank you.
I'll ask a question. I just, first, thank you for all the work you've done over the last several years in researching and, you know, revealing this part of, of our local history. It's, it's definitely been very informative for so many of us in the community. And I would say I'm very supportive of the project. So my question is actually, what would be the next steps to give the, the A-OK if, if there was board support?
Well, the next step is-
It might be for Dr. Harrison, actually.
Yeah, I would say, Michael, I think with the board's support, I would collaborate in dialogue with village leadership and, and of course, the committee. And there would need to be some agreements related to the construction on the space that we would navigate through with our facility side and our legal side, but then some intermunicipal agreements related to the maintenance and upkeep of, of the artwork itself. So that would be a process that I would initiate with the village administrator Larry Schopper and to navigate those next steps and so to map out what our respective timeline would be.
And just on a personal level, I don't know if others would like to see it too. I enjoyed and appreciate rereading and was moved by rereading the article you wrote for the Roost. The question, the, the one statement kind of shocked me and I'd love to, to find the deeper text around it, where you refer to New York State as having been a capital of slavery for two centuries. And personally, I'd like to understand that further because it's referenced in your proposed text as well.
Yeah, that actually comes straight off the New York State Historical Society's website. And when we researched with them and we spoke with them, that also was a line that just flew out at us. And that's precisely what I've been teaching about the history of slavery in New York and specifically the South, Southern Westchester County. Those, that is the statistic. It, it's mind-boggling.
Yeah, so if you could send that link to, that'd be great because I'd love to read that further.
I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I pushed the wrong button. I just want to say, you know, in the interest of transparency, I think the trustees and the administration are aware that I have been, you know, a community member who's observed many of this committee's meetings. And, you know, I'm very supportive of this. I, I think that the history and the work that's been done in the historical society could really be very helpful to the district and the community in so many ways. And I just have to say that, you know, I don't know if Lisa wants to share as well, you know, after this meeting and this conversation, you know, Vinnie Bagwell, over the past year, she's gotten so many amazing commissions, including one on Fifth Avenue, where there used to be the statue of Dr. Sims, who is an example of a part of our history that has not been very well talked about in terms of, he had been a doctor who had engaged in experiments on enslaved people. And Vinnie actually worked with the community there and was chosen over other artists because of her work with the community. And similarly, her Sojourner Truth statue is right now on Walkway on the Hudson and have been commissioned by the governor. So I just really, you know, wanted people to sort of be aware of her statue in the artistic community. She's very easy to Google in that way. And there she is with her studios and yockers just, you know, down the river from us, you know, with her African rain garden work. I mean, I just have to say, her work is so beautiful. And with that, I do have a question, which is, do you think it wouldn't be, she wouldn't be communicating with the district, but is, is there a plan that she would be communicating with the village about, you know, how this is going to be? Or does she make a proposal and then people talk about it? I was just wondering, because she's so well-known for her work with the communities where her art will sit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not 100% sure how her education prowess will, will rub off on us. We can, we are friends with her now. We've created a tremendous friendship with her. She's been on our porches, she's been having lunch with us. She is more than willing and able to extend all kinds of educational outreach to communities, to different groups. She's happy to come and, and lead conversations. She has groups of kids coming to her studio all the time. She is 100% ready and able to be a real partner with us.
Thank you for sharing that.
David?
I just want to say, thank you very, very much for that very eloquent and informative presentation. Really appreciate it. I think the, the charge then is on us and the schools and everybody involved to, to make sure that we embrace teaching real New York history, in particular, you know, real local. And I love the fact that we partner with the local institutions to do so. So I certainly think it's a, always a great idea to study history and to study all, all history. So, thank you.
Maura?
So my question is a little more prosaic and forgive me if this was, I know I had seen if we could throw up the, again, the picture of the space where the proposed bar relief will sit. I was curious about whether it was going to be facing the street or how it would sit in that space, just for the sake of, if, if indeed the project has gotten that far along.
Yeah, Maura, thanks so much for asking that question. So we, we had Vinnie, beautiful afternoon, come have lunch with us and we wandered up here and she was immediately taken with the possibility of this space right here. The artist in her just glowed. It's when that tree was in its bright red and it would be facing out, so it would be just to the, the east of that bench there, sort of where the hill is going up, it would be sort of excavated to be level. So as you were walking up and down the street or just paused to look at it, it would be eye level or maybe just a little higher, but you would be able to gaze directly into the piece of art. And just below, embedded into the brick wall, would be the plaque there.
So it will, just, just to understand, will the, the current plaque then be removed or replaced?
Well, if you ask me, I would, I would love it because it's nothing more than just, you know, just sort of a list of donors, I don't even know how many years ago, of the garden committee. So it's not an educational plaque, it's simply just sort of a list of names. Maybe that could go somewhere else. I would propose changing the location.
Yeah, I would say those would be all things considered within the scope. I certainly wouldn't want to diminish the, the work of the garden committee over the years and time, but we can see from the, the photo where that stands relatively recently. But I, I think that's all a matter of the planning and logistics that we would work through if the project was to advance with the board's support this evening and, you know, the subsequent dialogue that we would ensue with the village.
So I have one more, one more question then, just regarding when you talk about grading. I, it sounds as though the, the plaque itself would need to be seated on something, but it isn't a large, so, mounting place or, or, so I assume that the trees that are behind it wouldn't be impacted by any grading that would be done?
No.
Great. Thank you.
It's sort of related to the discussion about the longevity of, of projects. I would just ask for consideration as you do planning for looking into what sorts of care or, you know, what, what might be needed five or 10 or 15 years from now to continue to make sure that what we, what gets installed initially continues to look great over time because it's, one of the things we do with all of our, our capital planning is, you know, it's not just for this generation, it's for many generations to come. So we just, I think it's important to ensure that that would be a consideration in the planning.
I think, and that's what I think what Dr. Harrison was alluding to in terms of some of the agreements that would have to get worked out, that would include the continued maintenance of the installation so that it's not something that the district would be responsible for, but that there, there would be a defined entity, whether it's the village or someone else who has that responsibility and that would carry that out over time because, you know, certainly we want to make sure that it's something that's going to be taken care of, but also not something that the district is going to have the responsibility for caring for.
So as, as of now, according to the information, the, the idea though, Brian, is that the, there would be an agreement worked out with the village to continue to take, take care of this? I'm, I'm simply saying this, you know, that's the expectation right now or?
Yeah, Brian, if I may interject, certainly, Maura, I would endeavor to enter into agreement with the village where they would seek to maintain the artwork in perpetuity. And much like the War Memorial that sits on the other corner of the, the Main Street property, where the, the village does provide the maintenance to that, certainly there's numerous monuments throughout the village and they, they have the resources and the relationships with the particular vendors and experts that do that work. So I think it would be well-placed, it being in, in their domain. But I certainly don't want to commit on behalf of the village. That would be a part of the, the ongoing discussion to make sure there was a responsible plan to care for such spectacular, meaningful artwork.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I have, I have another question and this is maybe premature or it may be just looking at the downside of this, but I, I also support the, not only the research, but you know, the intention to place this here. But I also worry a little about its, so the, the upkeep actually being a, a bigger commitment if it were to be targeted in some way. And I, I guess I, I look at this divided world that we're living in right now and I get a little concerned about that. So that's part of the reason for asking the question, but also just to raise the public awareness of the way that this might, the way that this might work and how it may develop.
I would say we certainly can't hide from the tensions and conflicts that exist in, in society. But if I would say that there would be a safe, that probably some of the safer locations in community, it would be something that's front and center on Main Street, adjacent to the police department on school grounds. So the hope is that would be a deterrent in itself. But, you know, this is an initiative that I, I think we all stand behind and, and we protect and that I, I certainly would hope that no one would look to take out any of whatever their negativity is on such a, a piece of art. But, you know, we, we certainly would take whatever steps possible to, to ensure that it's properly maintained and that it would, of course, be illuminated in, in that very public space.
Can I also just add something? I, I think it's also important to, to sort of not shy away from controversy. I think that, you know, one of the, if, if, let's say that were to happen, I think one of the important things about maybe sometimes controversy is that it affords an opportunity, right, to, for, to really talk to our kids because about this history and, you know, even, even, you know, sort of in, you know, when something negative happens and certainly I hope it, that's not what would happen, but, you know, I think that's why centering it is important, right? Because we have to, as a community, as we say that these things are important to us, I think it's important that we, we sort of put our vision of the community, what's important out there. And that's a way of teaching our kids. If, if we don't sort of center it because we're afraid of controversy, then it becomes difficult, right? Because it's a, it's difficult to, to just sort of have a generation of kids that are comfortable and, you know, have sort of racial literacy and can talk about these issues if we don't teach them and we don't sort of give them those, those building blocks. I think it's important, but it's a, I think it's a really good point because that's a possibility, right?
Thank you. So I don't know if there are any further questions from the trustees. Yeah, I, I think there's, you know, just hearing everyone's comments, support amongst the board for using the space in, in this regard. I think though, there's still obviously a lot of details that need to be worked out, including the agreements and then the finalization of the artwork and the, the plaque. And my understanding is that the district will have a role in that process, but I think at, at this point, I think there's support for moving forward. It's now the devil's in the details of getting the agreements worked out and everything else that would set this up to be a successful project.
Great.
Great.
All right. Well, well, thank you. Thank you all very much, Arlene, Lisa, Sarah, for joining us tonight for this great conversation. Between Carol and me, we will be in communication with both the village and you regarding kicking off what those next steps look like, understanding that, you know, there's maybe opportunities or need to come back to the respective boards for discussion and finalization around details. But we certainly look forward to, to being partners with you and the village in this important initiative. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. So now we move on to our, the next portion for tonight, which is our roundtable. And so I'll turn back over to you, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Ellis for this portion. I think we're also gonna need to probably get a bunch of people promoted to be able to speak and participate. So I'll let that piece of it happen as well. And while that's happening, you know, I'll extend my thanks to all of the administrators who are attending this evening and, and giving up their time to join us. So we certainly appreciate it and look forward to a, a good discussion that I think will be, you know, the beginning of a, a process and dialogue and, and hopefully not just a standalone, isolated endeavor, but something that will continue to pervade the work that we're doing as, as a district over this year into next year, taking the lessons that we've learned from COVID and applying them to hopefully when we are in a more normal, you know, dare I say, regular school routine.
So thank you very much, Brian. And, and as Brian did, I certainly want to thank all of my, my colleagues who have put in a, a very long day already, but this conversation is going to be one that's really important. And I think one of the hallmarks of the partnership that we've enjoyed with the Board of Education in recent years has been our ability to engage around important conversation, to engage in learning together. So tonight, in that spirit, Mary is going to facilitate a learning experience for the board and the administrative team. It is a learning experience that will engage us in dialogue that is going to be timely in nature. It's going to have us reflect on education today, the challenges that we're facing in education. It is going to pull from some of the recent surveys that we've administered to the school community, which I think is a model to show the, the value that we put on the feedback that we receive from our community members, from our staff and of course, our, our students. This is going to be a structured learning session, one that's designed to be encapsulated within about 40 minutes. And so there's going to be some protocols that Mary's going to implement and we're all, as everybody wants to say different things and share. We're going to have to be patient. We're going to have to wait for our turn and we're going to have to do a lot of listening. And to accommodate that, we're going to utilize some technology that our students have been utilizing throughout this distance and hybrid learning experience. So as I pass the baton over to our fine facilitator, Mary. We'll be jumping around with some technology, sharing some slides and utilizing some technology. So we'll be bouncing back and forth a little bit and sharing screens. And trustees are going to be asked to engage along with our administrative team and some activities. So that said, Mary, the floor is yours and we're ready to go on a journey with you tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Um, instead, Board of Education trustees, thank you so much for having us tonight. And I want to say good evening and welcome to all my colleagues. I know I've seen some of you many, many hours ago, and here we are still working, right? And still learning from each other. So as Chris said, tonight's workshop is really about collaborating together to look at some information and see what that information, information might tell us. So there are two things I'm going to ask all our participants to have ready on your computers in addition to the Zoom meeting. You're going to want the slides that were shared with you earlier that have the data we're going to look at. And you're also going to want to be sure that you have another tab with the Jamboard open. So if you haven't done that yet, this would be a great time to do that. So in our conversation tonight, Chris, would you be able to put up the slides, please?
Absolutely.
And as Chris mentioned, we're going to be using a few different technology tools to help facilitate the conversation. This is going to be new for us to do this in a, in a public setting, bouncing between slides and a Jamboard. So be patient with us as we all work on this together and we all learn together. Okay. So Chris, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So in December, we sent out to our community, a parent guardian survey regarding distance learning and parent perceptions about how things were going so far. We know that parent feedback has been a tremendous resource to us since last March, when we entered into a, a very new and a very unknown way of, of running schools and of teaching and learning. So in this survey, we asked parents a number of questions. How they felt about safety within our buildings, how, and also how they felt about teaching and learning within our buildings. It's important to remember that this is a survey of perceptions. And based on different ages, different kinds of kids, parents have different levels of involvement and knowledge about what's going on with their children. So we also know that we've been giving a lot of surveys this year about a lot of different things. And some parents were very eager to keep answering surveys. Some were not, and some felt that they had given enough. So it's also very important for us to recognize that we're looking at portions of data here. We can't presume that the data that we're looking at tonight is representative of the entire community, of an entire grade level or a building. And as we, we dig in, you'll see from the numbers what the participation looked like. So I just want to say those upfront to help us frame what we're going to be looking at. You've heard me say this before. It's a phrase that statisticians like to use, that all models are wrong and yet some are useful. So I encourage you to enter into this exploration tonight from a stance of curiosity about what the data might mean, what it might tell us, and what we might see as next steps. So we're going to, as, as Chris said, we're going to follow a very structured protocol tonight. And the data we're going to be looking at is limited to one of the questions on the survey. Parents were asked to consider their level of agreement with a series of statements. One of which was my child receives adequate feedback on his or her learning. Now, even in putting this question on a survey, there are a lot of assumptions. There are assumptions that parents thoroughly understand what feedback is. And as educators, we may view it one may, one way, parents may view it another. We don't know yet. The word adequate, what does that mean? Could have lots of different meanings depending on, on who's, who's reading it, who's responding. And then again, going back to the fact that this is a perception, that it is actually the child who's receiving the feedback. This is the parent's perception about it. So again, just want to frame that. So Chris, if we could go to the next slide. As we look at the data, I'm going to ask you to think about four different questions. And you'll have an opportunity to share your thinking about these on the Jamboard. Even though you'll have access to all four at the same time, simply because of the, the setup tonight. I am going to ask you to go in order because these are structured carefully to, to lead you through the data in a way that is, is really, really productive. This is a very typical protocol used for looking at data. A lot of the data teams in our buildings use a similar protocol. The educators on our board may have also looked at data using a similar series of questions. So the first thing is really just what do you notice? And here, think about very factual kinds of statements. More parents in grade X replied than in parent, than parents in grade Y, right? Without digging into what it might mean, first, just take a look. What do you see? What do you notice? As you do that, there will probably be some things that surprise you. And that will be the next question that you'll be asked to respond to is what in here surprises you? Then the next question is what might you infer? So again, thinking about the limitations of the data, the limitations of the validity, the reliability of the data. What might it be telling you? What might you infer from what you see? And then the last thing, what questions do you have? And it might be questions about the data itself. It might be questions about the people responding to the data. It might be questions about understanding of the terminology in the data. I don't know what your questions are going to be yet. I have some ideas about what they might be, but you know, we'll see what you, what happens. To be perfectly transparent, I do want to let you know that our instructional leaders went through exactly the same process at a meeting. And so are many of our administrators participated in that. I've asked them to come tonight with fresh eyes and to, as best we can in an online environment, sit beside you as we've done before, to look at information and talk about it. So once we have time to look at the data, to answer the questions, we'll have some time together to look through and see what kinds of things emerge for us. What themes do we see? What next steps might we take? Okay. So Chris, if we could go to the next slide. So here you see the responses in terms of percentage from each grade in our elementary schools. And I, I again, want to remind our participants that you all have access to these slides. So we're going to go through them fairly quickly right now. And then you'll have an opportunity to, to spend a little bit of time with it and have your responses. So just to, to help us practice a little bit, would anybody like to give me just a statement of a fact of what they see based on this data?
I noticed that there are 393 responses.
Thank you, David. Anybody else?
Fifth grade had a lower response rate than anyone and grade one had the highest response rate.
Thank you. You're wonderful at just doing facts. Thank you so much. Okay, Chris, let's go to the next one. So here you can see the breakdown in secondary responses. And again, you'll have an opportunity to, to look further on this. Anybody see anything that surprises them?
How many fewer responses we got in the secondary parents?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll do lots of surprises later. Next slide, please. So what I'm going to do here is basically kind of give you a tour of how the data is set up. And then you'll have an opportunity to look at it closely on your own at this point in time. We're not going to go into reactions and questions because I want you to have time to live with the data and respond on the Jamboard. So the data's been organized by elementary, separate from secondary, and in two different ways. So this way of looking at the data collects by grade the different responses. And parents chose either strongly agree, agree, they were neutral, they disagreed, or they strongly disagreed. What you're seeing on this chart is not percentages like we did for number of respondents, but the actual number of people who stated a certain level of agreement. So the data here, we're looking at elementary, and as I said, it is grouped by grade level. If we go to the next slide, you're looking at secondary organized in exactly the same way. And next slide, please. Here, what we've done is we've organized the data differently. Here, the level, it's organized by the level of agreement. So you can look at the strongly agrees across different grade levels in elementary, then the agrees across different levels. And again, it's number of respondents. And Chris, next slide. And here we have the same information, the information secondary, again, organized by level of agreement. Okay. So these are the data sets that you're going to be looking at, spending a little bit of time with and responding to those four questions. Chris, could you flip to the Jamboard now? Okay, so there are four pages on the Jamboard. And on the first one, you'll be recording just the facts. What do you notice? Some of the things that came up before. Chris, if you could just go over to the icon of the little post-it on the side for those people who may not have used a Jamboard before and click on that. So what happens is it brings up a screen for you. You can type your response in there, hit save, and it will appear on the Jamboard. You're able to grab it, move it around, resize it, change the color, whatever you'd like to do. It's, it's really, it's pretty straightforward. As we work, you'll see all these boxes popping up as everybody shares their thoughts. Chris, would you go to the next page? So you'll notice that Chris went to the top and used the arrows to flip between the different pages. So here you'll be recording what surprised you on the next one. What you might infer based on the data. And the last one, what questions you have. So again, you, as you're working, you'll have the option of flipping between these pages. I suggest that you do your responses in order, but up to you. So that's going to be our process. Are there any questions from the group right now about how to go about doing this? Because then I want to just give you time to, to look at the data and respond. I'm modeling wait time. Okay, he, hearing no questions, and if anybody does, you know, please feel free to put it in the chat. Or you all have my cell phone, you can reach out to me and let me know what you need. And if you need anything, just, you know, let it, let us know as we're working. We're going to give you, I'm going to say about, um, let's take, let's start with five minutes and see where that takes us. And while our participants are looking at the data and thinking about their responses, Chris, if you could have the Jamboard up so that our community members who are watching have an opportunity to see it grow in the way that our participants would, that would be great.
Absolutely. So what I, I will be doing throughout the course of this five minutes is that I'm going to flip back and forth between the different pages. And community will get to see each page as it populates. And also begin to think about maybe how some of the, the stickies or the post-its are positioned in relation to some other comments that have been made, because there may be some deliberate connection to those placements. So I, I hope you have at it, take advantage of the next five minutes to share your thoughts and responses to the prompts that Mary provided. And then Mary, I know you'll give us a couple minute warning once time is wrapping up.
And I'll check in with everybody at five minutes and see if you want more time or if you feel that we're ready to move on.
See some folks are starting to populate other prompts as well. See, some folks are starting to populate other prompts as well. Seems that most, most have moved on to the other slides beyond the first one. What surprised you? Number moving over to the inferences that one may make? Questions that you have? Mary, I can see some are getting fancy here and learning how they can rotate the post-its.
All right, so we hit the five minute mark and I'm seeing a lot of responses around the number of people who responded and the percentages of people who responded and some questions about the meaning of feedback. Looking at this, I'm sensing that people haven't yet had the opportunity to really dig into looking at the the data in terms of the actual responses. So I'm going to give you about another three minutes and then check in with you. And I do want to echo what Chris said. It looks like people are getting fancy.
Wow.
Chris, I'm going to use a strategy I use in meetings to test whether people are ready to move on. If you could stop presenting for just a moment so I could see everybody. Thank you. Would you please show me how many more minutes you would like to engage with the data before we move on? And you can show me anywhere from zero as a fist to a five if you want five minutes. How many minutes would you like? Okay, lots of consensus. Let's go back to the jam board. Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to give a big shout out to Chris for being my assistant and what to put on. So thank you for that.
One of my many talents.
Yes. So our next step is to take a few minutes to just go through and read what other people have put up. And as you do this, I want you to be thinking about what themes emerge? What do you see as as common ideas coming out? Do you see things that that go together? Are there are there topics that come up frequently? And then, second to that, is there any of these post-its that that really popped out at you and made you go, wow, that is really interesting? So we'll come back in a couple of minutes after you have time to look through and we'll talk about what themes we see emerging. And what? My my timer. And what popped out at you? So take a few minutes to do that.
And so for community, I'm just expand the screen and I'll scroll from slide to slide. So you can get a sense of some of the the observations or questions that were posed by the administration and board.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to move on and talk about some of the the patterns, some of the themes that we see emerging. If this, if we were doing this in a room altogether, we'd probably turn and talk to a neighbor or work in small groups to do this little trick here in this kind of environment. What I'd like to suggest is that we we take turns between board trustees and members of our administrative team in sharing some of the things they see. Want to be sure that we that we hear as many voices as as we possibly can tonight. So let's start with a board member. Would somebody like to share a theme you see a pass, a pattern you noticed?
In in looking at the last slide in in terms of the questions, shocking, probably have as a group more questions than anything else. You know, I think the notion of do parents understand what feedback is being provided and what does feedback mean seems to be, you know, a common theme that emerged in the questions. I think I think that's an important question because, you know, we talk a lot about you know, the different elements of the community indications. Obviously, we have our educators, we have the students, we have the parents, and I think oftentimes the parents are the ones who struggle with the educational language and what is meant by certain terms and what is it that we're looking to achieve. So.
Great. So common theme is, do parents know what feedback is? Yeah, yeah. How about one of my administrative colleagues, another pattern that you might have noticed?
I agree with Brian. It's Andrea Cantor. I think questioning or trying to delve deeper into families' understanding of feedback is important and also the perception of feedback. We said that part of the survey is perception. So do families perceive something as feedback that maybe teachers and staff don't think is feedback? And is feedback always concrete and something written on a paper or is feedback everything we do and every action, every word we say to children to interact with? So I think we lead to more questions.
Thank you. Okay, back to our board members. Any other patterns that you noticed?
I noticed that when the parents are new to the grade, first grade, there was a a big turnout of surveys and then again in sixth grade. So I noticed that how to keep up that enthusiasm, you know, so they can continue to respond to the surveys.
So Gina, I want to be sure I understand what you're saying. Are you saying that in the years that parents are just starting in a building, there was a higher level of response?
Yeah, higher level in sixth grade and a high level in first. First was higher than kindergarten was a little surprising to me, but um, yeah, that's what I know. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, there were some, a lot of focus because that was who the respondents were around parents, understanding and response rate. And just knowing that we have prior year surveys and conversations that and both and also more largely our perspective is that as students age through K 12 that they're more and more responsible and able to to you know, voice their own opinions. So in fact, while there may be a lower response from secondary parents in the past, we've gotten a high response rate from students. And so I think students are able to provide their own response to these questions more so than trying to engage parents.
And Michael, thank you that, you know, reinforces the just helping us to remember that what we're looking at here is parent perception. Right? And the for this particular set of data, we're not looking at students, just parents. Okay. How about back to my administrative colleagues? Do you notice any patterns in the comments that people are making?
Going to say, Joyce. I was going to just remark on, you know, when we send out surveys like this, you know, what context do we provide? Like, there are so many questions here and it makes me wonder, you know, if how we set up people to take a survey by either defining something or giving information so that we all start in sort of a common place as we answer the questions.
And how about back to the board? Are there any other patterns in the things that people put up that you noticed? All right, so let's let's move on then to, was there anything in here where when you read another person's response that it it really resonated with you?
Can I chime in on to me that I heard Jane say a few minutes ago, I thought was interesting that the the parents who are new in the building had a lot of feedback. I found that also to be true. And you know, I was also thinking that inadvertently, this is also a conversation about how well things are going during closure or during their remote learning. And I think it's so interesting that parents of students who are new in the building who may have little a little to compare their current experience to are largely finding that they agree that feedback is adequate. So having nothing else compared to this is positive. So where parents may have felt like they were getting more feedback when their students are in the building full time, they are not, that's not the feedback we're getting and which I found that would be positive. And if that was convoluted, I apologize. On my head, it made sense.
So Mary, this is David. You know, I think one thing I would add is I always wonder with these surveys, I certainly wonder with this one, it was given in December of of this year. You know, we we've categorized responses by grade level, but I wonder to what extent anyone's response is indicative of their experience solely in that grade level as opposed to their overall experiences within the district. We, you know, we don't necessarily, you know, and then this goes back to the point about context. You know, we don't necessarily say, just tell us about what's happening this year. And obviously, that may be front of mind for most of us, but I don't know that we could affirmatively know that that anyone's response is only talking about one child this year and and not influenced by their prior experiences, a little bit to what Matt said as well, you know, with respect to those first year parents.
So I will say that the the text in the front of the survey did ask for response for this year. But I also know that not everybody reads what's in the front. And as you said, your experience from this year, you you can't help but be influenced by your attitudes and your experiences from prior years. Yeah.
I had a quick notice of something that I thought was worth chiming in about that made me react on the questions tab. If you go over that tab. Yep. It was, I just made it, put it in the middle. It's still there. Yeah, there it is right in the middle. I saw someone wrote that. How do parents feel about the feedback they as parents receive? I had written something similar in regards to, you know, sort of wondering about, you know, a lot of this survey encompassed feedback from was it was all about adequate. And that's another pattern, obviously, that we brought up that I'm curious about that. Another question about, but the use of that word. But it was really about teacher to student feedback. And this quote or this comment or question echoed my thinking about what about how do parents feel about the feedback they are getting from the school or from their child about the feedback they're getting from their teachers? And which then leads to that question of do parents really understand feedback? And is it up then to the children to explain what the feedback means? And especially now, when it's not conferencing or, you know, face to face, it's really over Google, right? Like, they're doing this through Google now back and forth. And you know, what happens if you didn't hit send? Or what happens if the send button didn't send it on time and they didn't read the feedback till two days later? You know, there's just a whole lot of questions that brings up for me. So I thought that was a really resonating statement that someone wrote.
Yeah, David, to, you know, add to what you were saying, you know, one of the comments that I think was in there that resonated with me was, you know, how does this compare to other years and other survey data that we have and how much of it is a function of the environment that we're in now versus are there other trends or themes that we can pull out about feedback, you know, over a longer continuum?
Brian, to Brian's point, the one thing that I I thought about a lot preparing for this exercise and then listening and watching tonight is is just that very point. And how much of this truly does align and correlate with the prior surveys, the school quality surveys? And how much of it is skewed because of the situation that we all find ourselves in? You know, there's so many questions about understandings that keep coming up that that now I I struggle to understand where the corollaries may exist. the corollaries may exist between this dataset and the school quality surveys that were given in twice prior in 19 and 17.
I just wanted to add on my aha moment for me when I was reading everyone's posted notes was for the last page, what questions you have? Somebody wrote, was trying to make this into a question, but wouldn't it be interesting to see how this data breaks out in different areas of learning? So I think when I looked at this survey, I just thought overall feedback. But when parents were taking this survey and families, were they thinking of certain subjects? Did certain area stands out to them? And I think it would be interesting if we really just broke it down in further into each subject to see the amount of feedback they feel that they're getting for their students.
Eliza, one of the things that popped out to me, and I would not be able to find it right now. But somebody commented about the fact that people see a lot of feedback in the area of writing, that parents are used to seeing feedback about in writing. And it's often done in a way that is very visible. You know, David, I know you mentioned conferencing and believe it or not, teachers are still conferencing. It looks different, but they're, they're still doing it. But as you said, a lot of it is now happening through technology. And so there's a record, right, of, of the conference of, of what is said. And Liza brings up a great point, you know, what about other content areas where the feedback may look different and may not be quite as visible?
Well, that begs the question, right, then, like, to go a tad bit deeper on that, right? So if we're talking about feedback and how it impacts student, student progress and how they make progress, you know, who's, who's, you know, how do we know if children are accepting that feedback and taking that feedback and growing from that feedback? You know, where does it go from there? You know, again, bringing back to the idea of, you know, if we're communicating with parents by using the word adequate, right? Like, let's, let's try to connect it, you know, how, I saw a couple of other comments, I had asked the same question too. I, someone mentioned about how does the word adequate align with teacher practice? Someone, you know, using and thinking about dancing and is there a bar set for how teachers should give feedback? And, and then in turn, going back to a very common pattern, how do parents, or how are parents made to understand that definition of feedback? And what it should look like and how it in the end, regardless of all this, shows up in the work?
I'd like to chime in, I agree with you, David. I was just thinking about the question as well with adequate. That's pretty subjective because it depends on the content area, the task and so forth, as in what adequate is. Because some parent may want immediate feedback in the moment or may want it at a rate of every day, they want to report on it or weekly or so forth. So it depends on what you deem as adequate and what type of feedback you're looking for as a parent.
And one of our teachers is watching tonight and she texted me and said, wouldn't it be interesting to give the same survey to the teachers and the staff? And to see what the, the bars and the coding would show from our teachers and different grade levels? And what do they think about the feedback that they're offering now too?
Well, I.
Actually, I think that's an interesting question. I think it'd also be interesting to see what the teachers think about how the students are receiving the feedback and whether they are, you know, showing growth with the feedback or whether for a group of students, for whatever reason, it's not sinking in. I mean, you know, a, you know, a common, you know, thing I think I've said over different board meetings, and this goes back to, you know, the parent piece of it. Yeah, school looks very different even outside of a COVID environment than when most of us were in school. You know, there's no longer papers that you write, either that are typed up and handed in and come back with red ink on them. Even in a non-COVID world, it's a Google Doc that gets submitted and comes back with comments which parents may often never see because students may not share it and parents don't have access to it. So I think we have to also think about what, you know, feedback parents actually see or know is occurring.
So Brian, I'd add on to that, that was, that's a really good point. You know, you made reference to the technology end of it. I'd also make reference to, you know, what we, what we know and what we are working toward with respect to when we give feedback. You know, that notion of giving feedback at the end of a process, you know, after a student has written a paper, say, and turned it in and it comes back with a grade on it and comments. You know, what we, what we've learned over time is that feedback is, is less impactful in terms of advancing student learning and changing student, you know, learning behaviors than the feedback that's given in process. As a student is engaged in the process of, of drafting or revising a paper, for instance, or, or, or working on a project. Ultimately, the, the feedback that comes at the end, you know, is almost, it's, it's ancillary to the grade in some ways in, in terms of how it gets treated. Whereas students, you know, feedback that's actionable, that can change the, the course for a student in the midst of their work ultimately has, has a much greater bang for the buck. So that feedback may, may not be visible because it's given in the middle of work as opposed to at the end.
And I could actually just piggyback on that sentiment too, to, I very strongly agree with. With so much of the feedback that students appreciate is the numerical feedback, grade they get at the end. And then the, the time consuming and sort of detailed written feedback that you provide ends up being the less valued. And maybe that's a conversation about where we put our, our emotional weight on grades versus how we respond to feedback. So I, I think what you're saying is really true. The degree to which we can incentivize students responding to feedback mid-process, push them to revise their thinking and work before final submission is critical. And to the degree that we can, taking some of the steam out of the conversation about grade would be helpful too.
But Matt, I think that is very much a secondary perspective. Cause I think if you look at the elementary school perspective, you know, I was going to go back to something Brian said. You know, not just about parent knowing about their feedback or parent perception, but, you know, asking our students. I know we often only survey our secondary students when we do these kinds of surveys. But I think if we had, you know, interviews with our elementary students, even ours, young as kindergarten, first grade, they could very clearly articulate the ways in which their teachers give them feedback to help them, you know, across content areas. And it just sounds different and it looks different because it's not in a grade form, right? It's often anecdotal and it's, it's across everything. And, and I think when we think about what it looks like at elementary school, it's so different for in secondary. And I think it would be interesting to hear from the students, their perspective on when and how they get feedback and how it's used. Cause to David's point also, you know, the teachers at elementary school are much more frequently giving it along the way than they are giving it in a summative way. And so somewhere along the way, things start shifting for our kids and the focus becomes about the summative and that end grade.
And to add on to what Joyce is saying, just this past week or two, we learned something new from Jay in the technology department with Mode. And we're giving voice feedback and voice memos with student work. So there's not even something written down where a parent would actually see something written. So everything is developing and moving and changing so quickly that our feedback is changing and looks different day to day.
And I wanted to just go back to something that David was saying. Yeah, I'm certainly aware, just as a parent from, you know, we were talking about more so in the ELA process with the draft and the feedback and the editor process in writing. I think, you know, so I was talking earlier about how it'd be interesting to see if we could break it out amongst subjects and if the feedback is looked at differently. But I also think something that David was saying about the timeliness of the feedback. I think, you know, there's certainly that in process feedback, which is timely and important. But then also we know, you know, students and in particular, probably parents, also then focus on the grade that is received. And if you turn in a paper in December, but you don't get the grade until January, the student may not appreciate, maybe I really didn't take that feedback to heart and do what I was told. But now they've written another paper, done two more assignments since then, and it's kind of snowballing. They don't have that chance to, you take a pause and say, okay, maybe I'm not really getting this and I need some help. And they may be, you know, a little too far down the path. So I think, you know, not just the in process feedback, but looking about, you know, when that is coming and when students are getting it is important.
But I would actually add on to that, Brian, that really with technology and with the things that we've been able to do, they're able to get that feedback quicker than they would if it was hand in a draft and have the red ink, you know, written on it as we all may have experienced as educators or as students. You know, now students can change their, their route mid, you know, mid-paper or mid-assignment and actually perhaps reach that goal.
Again, how do you know of its effectiveness, right? Like, that could go back to that, like, you know, the, the purpose of the feedback is to drive the process. And I totally agree with all that. You know, you said David and Joyce as well. You know, but, but how do you, how do you know that the, the feedback is, is being effective? Like, how, at the end of the day, how do you know that it's adequate? Or whatever that word is meant to mean, right? You know, how, how do you know?
Well, I think that, I think that point's a good one, David. I, I think it's exceedingly hard for a parent to know, in all honesty.
I was gonna, I was.
I was just gonna say.
That as a parent, for, for the kids, again, I think that's part of what the teachers teach into when they, when they give feedback is the process at which we hold kids accountable for that feedback. So I think there's a disconnect between the information and the work that goes into being explicit with students about wow, why, how and when they get a variety of feedback and then how that information gets communicated to parents.
I don't want to. Joyce, about the, the difference, perhaps if we were to interview elementary students versus secondary students. I think that's, for me, one of the most surprising and points that I would reflect on. Because I have been, we have had the prior surveys and conversations about this topic. And that's an insight that I, that I hadn't considered before. But to the point that was raised earlier, that, you know, we, we have had these surveys and we did see the faculty perception and, and the secondary student perception. And there was a pretty significant gap in that. And I was interested in what Matt was saying, which is about, you know, what student perception of feedback may be a quantitative measure that they're looking for versus, but it might be also what Brian was saying about the timeliness of feedback. But you've had some conversations as school building administrators around this topic in, in prior years where there's some, some takeaways or steps at those times that, you know, inform this, where you are now, or, you know, in terms of trying to. It may be different in elementary schools, so perhaps for secondary in terms of trying to meet the, the difference between faculty perception and student perception. And, and the, the parent perception in secondary seems similar to, to what the students perceive, you know, in terms of the rates. So, you know, looking back over the last three or four years, as you've delved into this as school administrators, what steps are, are considered in terms of trying to help students and faculty arrive at the same shared understanding of feedback?
Michael, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm sorry, it was, I just, that was actually a question. Have, have there been steps taken over the last couple of years to try and bring faculty and student perception?
So for tonight, we're, we're going to be gathering our questions. And we're actually looking forward at a future presentation to answering some of these and digging in a little bit more. So I, I want to wrap up our thinking for tonight. Chris, if you could go to the next.
I'd say thank you, Ben, and I would look forward to that understanding in a future presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mary, I did want to just put out one other question, you know, for that longer discussion. Cause I know it's been said, we talked about it with some of the other board members. And just putting out the query of, you know, does the fact that there's parent teacher conferences at the elementary level, but not the secondary level as a matter of course, impact the parent view on feedback? And does, and how does that play into this whole discussion as well? So I wanted to put that question out there, certainly not something to answer tonight, but I think should be something that should be explored as part of the process.
Great. Thank you. So as you were talking, I tried to gather what I thought were some, some comments, some questions that would help us think about next steps following this conversation. So the things that, that I grasped from, from everyone's conversation. Most importantly, we really need a common definition of feedback. It's, it's very clear that there's lots of questions about what it, what it means, what parents think it means, what students, what teachers, right? So the idea that we want to find out how students are feeling about the feedback they're getting and we want to find out about how teachers are feeling about the feedback that students get. A really important question, does feedback impact student learning? I mean, the whole reason we're providing feedback, we hope, is to help students further their learning. So how can we tell? Is there a way that we can look at that, right? Are students responding to it at all? I mean, interesting discussion that came up between Matt and Joyce started it and a few other people involved in that about how students at different levels might respond to feedback? How incentivized are they by feedback or perhaps not? And then the question I also thought was really interesting about what is feedback looking, look like in different subjects? So we're going to take these questions as well as the others, you know, go back, look at them. We certainly have some more information to gather. Our, our students at the secondary level have completed a survey about their learning. So we'll be able to do some comparisons there. And we're in the process of developing a survey for our teachers as well. So we'll, we'll have that information. And I am very much looking forward to taking this information back and looking at it a little bit deeper with my colleagues, with the instructional coaches, with the instructional leaders. Was absolutely fascinating to do this, go through this process with two different sets of people who brought very different lens to it and saw very different things. So I want to thank everybody for engaging in this. I think we uncovered a lot of really, really wonderful thinking and great questions for us to think about for next steps. And I again want to extend a thank you to all of my colleagues who, as Chris said, already put in a long day and spent your, your evening here talking with us about feedback. So my feedback to you is, is just a really huge thank you.
Great. And thank you, Mary, for facilitating this, this conversation, which I was impressed by how there was such alignment and identification of so many big questions, questions where there's critical dialogue that we need to continue to drill down on, to answer questions that help inform our work. How, that may pose questions about areas where we need to do a better job or a different type of job in communicating within the school community. So to everyone, thank you. This was a great, great dialogue and, and we look forward to those next steps in the spring where we bring some more of this together with another workshop that's going to be focused on the topic of feedback. And one in which I believe we'll be welcoming our instructional coaches to the conversation, which will be another new exciting dynamic for us to enjoy. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
One more thing there, like the, isn't the, the PD that a lot of the teachers are working on, on the Wednesdays is around feedback too? And that the case, that's, that's, that's also an important thing, that, you know, it's community supporting those Wednesdays. And it's really, really important that we do focus on that. So I'm glad that we did this tonight too, to focus on what we're spending the time on.
Yes. Thank you for acknowledging that, David. Assessment and feedback has been a major focus for us this year. And there's just been a lot of really great work done on our Wednesday afternoons around those topics. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Administrators, enjoy the rest of your evening. We'll now move on to the rest of the meeting, which is our consent agenda. So if there's any trustee that has a question about the consent agenda, please let me know.
I just had a few quick questions, questions around the, the item that was just added, the cooperative. That's always sounds great to find a way to reduce costs on purchases. I was just curious what kind of purchases we thought we might, you might be making through that cooperative.
Actually, Michael, it's the, it'll be the bleachers for the capital project, the bleachers in the fresh box. They have the most competitive price through that, that cooperative. I've been doing some research on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
So with that, can we get a motion to? So with that, can we get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Don't move. I was second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I think, Dr. Harrison, if you wanted to do your usual recap, that'd be great.
I'm just smiling because it appears that Gail is her connection froze and she is stuck and and Zoom is not letting us remove. Sorry, Gail. There we go. Oh, boy. So so I think that one, Michael, your question highlighted something important to community about the continued efforts of the district and Carol and always looking for opportunities to identify savings. And here's one that links directly to our capital project and finding opportunities for savings. And again, this relates back to the recent conversation that we had related to this. Frankly, when we look at the agenda tonight, there's only a handful of items where we certainly want to thank Vilma Dujavec from that worked at Main Street School for the last three and a half years for her service. She's resigned to move on to other ventures. And we have appointment of some new staff members, substitute cleaners, substitute teachers, some staff members with salary movement. And I think that's something that's notable because that really looks at our staff members that are committed to their advancement of their their education, which ultimately will benefit our children. So kudos to them. But that's about it worth acknowledging at this point in time, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We have our second community comment period now on the agenda. So if there are key members that wish to make a comment, please put your name and address in the chat feature in Zoom and you'll be recognized. While we're waiting to see if there's any comments, I'll note that our next meeting will be Tuesday, February ninth at seven thirty at the CPR and also via Zoom. So we look forward to that meeting, which will be, as Dr. Harrison said, earlier in the evening, the beginning of our budget process. So that will, that's obviously a key portion of the year. So seeing no one who has any comments this evening, if we can get a motion to adjourn for an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and collective bargaining issues and the employment history of particular persons.
Done, moved.
Done, moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.